...meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, March 3rd, 2020. We've got some pretty important items in front of us today, both very timely and both related to the community, to the safety of the community. And so we have brought the experts in to talk to us about the coronavirus and 911. And so we'll get to them presently. We're going to do the coronavirus first. And let me just say that I don't know if the other offices are the same. I suspect they are. But I'm getting some questions about what is the county doing to prepare for the coronavirus here? What are people supposed to do? What should we expect? And so a couple of things. I attended the NACO conference. I just got back last night. And we did have a report out from the CDC about what's happening in the United States and throughout the world related to the coronavirus. And I know you're working with the CDC. And I also was on a call this morning, put together by the governor's office, related to the coronavirus and what's happening in Ohio. And so we are now localizing it even further and talking about Hamilton County in the context of all of the above. But I think people just want to know what's happening, first of all, what kind of a status report, kind of the lay of the land. And then what if something were to happen here and we were to have some cases of coronavirus in Hamilton County? Then what are the action steps for parents, for kids, for, you know, that kind of thing? And those are the kinds of things that people are asking me. And so I thought it would be helpful to have an update, kind of a level-setting conversation with public health, who is leading the effort here in Hamilton County, and then ask them to come back periodically as needed as things change. And Greg just told me things are changing every day, which I think we know that, but I know that you guys are very busy. So we're very glad that you're here. Thank you for attending our meeting. And so if you would please come forward and provide us with the update. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse, commissioners, and Administrator Eludo for inviting us today. I am the interim health commissioner at Hamilton County Public Health. I've been with the agency for 15 years. And while the novel COVID-19 is something new to us, pandemics are not new to public health. So it's definitely something we've been tracking for several, a month and a half, two months now, and putting a lot of staff effort to making sure we're prepared. With me today is Dr. Steve Fagins. He is our medical director, and we're very lucky to have him on board as we work through this. So very first, I think it's super important to say immediate risk to the general public is low. First of all, there is no COVID-19 in Ohio. There are no positive cases of COVID-19 in Ohio. And I might as well also say Kentucky and Indiana as well, since we are in a tri-state region. So the immediate risk is low. You are certainly more likely to catch the flu right now than you are COVID-19. In fact, Dr. Fagins, in one of his slides, will talk a little bit about flu incidents in Hamilton County, just to reiterate the importance of that. And I do want to say, as Commissioner Dreehouse indicated, this situation is evolving. In fact, last evening, I had the slides prepared and I ran through them, and I had to make changes because some of the things that we had two days ago are no longer accurate. So we're trying to make sure we get the most important, the most accurate information. And I will say, I have had several questions from the media about where should I go to get the most current information? So if you wake up and you're looking on your Facebook or Twitter account and you're seeing something about COVID-19 and you say, "Holy moly, that's crazy," I'd encourage you to go to the CDC's website, or our website, or the Ohio Department of Health's website, and see if it's accurate. Because the information is so volatile, I want you to have the right information to share. So luckily for us, with COVID-19, it is very similar to a flu. The things that you can do right now to keep yourself safe are no different than we are telling schoolkids, parents, teachers, the community to do every day. We want you to wash your hands. 20 seconds of hand washing. If you want to watch a video on it, go to our website. One of my inspectors is singing the ABCs, washing his hands. It is the most important thing you can do. Secondly, keep those hands off your face, mouth, so that you're not contaminating yourself with germs. Secondly, cover your cough. If you have to cough, cover it. And then lastly, if you're sick, keep sick at home. If you have sick children, keep them home. I know it's a sacrifice because everybody works, and it does impact a family. But at the end of the day, keep sick home will prevent the spread of flu and COVID-19. So public health right now, at this phase in Ohio, is absolutely in a risk mitigation phase. So we've heard a lot of talk about self-quarantining. Any individual that comes back from China is being asked to self-quarantine for 14 days from the time they get back to the United States. The job of monitoring that is local public health. In Ohio, there are over 200 cases of individuals that have come back from China and staying home and self-monitoring for temperatures and symptoms. And then daily, they're reaching back to the health department or we're making contact to make sure that they're safe and they don't have any symptoms. If they do become symptomatic, I'll talk about it in a moment, they would become a person under investigation. In Ohio today, there are no persons under investigation as of this morning.
Just the difference between the word quarantine and isolation. So you hear these words a lot. And so an individual with an infectious disease is under isolation. And so even a person under investigation, who we haven't yet ruled out or ruled in, any kind of infectious disease, including coronavirus, would be in self or in isolation, certain types of isolation. The contacts or people at risk are in quarantine. And that word quarantine is used a lot, and it really just simply means that you're monitoring symptoms and that you are not going out, and that you're in many cases under self-quarantine. So individuals only from mainland China right now, possibly Iran, but no one's leaving Iran, are under self-quarantine for those 14 days after returning.
So the definition of a person under investigation is defined by the Centers for Disease Control. In fact, this was a slide that had to change last week. Those criteria are based on risk. So the list of countries is on the right side of the slide there. The five countries currently are China, Iran, Italy, Japan, and South Korea. Only people from China are currently being asked to self-quarantine. But the others, if they exhibit any symptoms, are to report those to the health department to follow up on and to look into further. In addition, because of a couple instances out on the West Coast, if you are in severe acute respiratory illness and have not had that travel, at that time, you should also contact your physician. The health department is tracking all contacts with the person under investigation as well. So we're taking this, as I mentioned, the mitigation approach, where anyone who had contact with that individual that is now a person under investigation, they would be asked to self-isolate as well, until we either find a negative test result for that person under investigation, or until the 14-day quarantine period is over and that person is not exhibiting symptoms.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
How many people then have been tested?
There are seven. As of Thursday at 2:00 PM, which was their, I'm sorry, Monday at 2:00 PM, which was their last update, seven individuals were persons under investigation.
And also have been tested and negative.
Okay.
State of Ohio.
Thank you.
And to just kind of share with this table, this table is a progression of symptoms. And so if you see the symptoms, the clinical features on the left, which basically fever, if you look at that, it sounds like the flu, okay? Sounds like a typical respiratory. Remember that coronavirus typically causes an upper respiratory. This is a lower respiratory. This is a pneumonia, okay? This is not just a typical kind of upper respiratory. It's pneumonia. And so when you have concern about that and an epidemiologic risk, first and foremost, used to be a travel history. Now first and foremost is a direct exposure, meaning within six feet and all those things, of someone with a documented known case of coronavirus disease, which is COVID-19. Late last week, Thursday evening, I believe, based on the potential for community spread, the CDC added the third criteria, which is an individual with very concerning symptoms, possibly even respiratory failure, in which you have ruled out all typical things, respiratory panel, viral respiratory panel, influenza, legionella, pneumonia. Ruled out those things, and you don't know that that might be a criteria for testing. And so that was added because of the potential for community spread.
Thank you.
So here in Hamilton County, and quite frankly, in Ohio, we have, public health has always played that role for emergency pandemic planning. So we are part of an eight-county region that routinely tests our plans and ensures that we're kind of connected as a region, so that our information sharing is appropriate, and so that we're doing the most knowledgeable approach to handling a pandemic. So interestingly enough, in October of 2019, we had a pandemic test that we did as a region and included Indiana and Kentucky. We came together and we hypothetically played out what would happen if the flu was spreading in a way that caused us to think about large community spread with no solution, no antivirals, no way to mitigate. And so we talked about the things that you're hearing in the media about self-isolation. We talked about things about if it got to a point where we saw a lot of community spread, the need to do school closures or mass gathering cancellations. So these are things that we, as a region, have been kind of working on, quite frankly, for well over a decade, and we work together to do that. In addition, we have a pretty robust health alert network. The state of Ohio actually has a system that we're allowed to utilize locally and within our region. So if we have a message to get out, such as last Friday, we changed the way that the medical community reports potential cases to local health. We created a one-phone number that the medical community should call with concerns, and we're utilizing the drug poison control number here locally and regionally to make it less confusing for our physicians. So we, as a community, or we, as a region, went ahead and used our local health alert network to let the entire region of physicians and hospital systems know the new one-stop number. They're using it in the evenings, but during the daytime, public health is kind of fragmented. We have a bunch of different health departments depending on where you are, and we wanted to make it simple. So we are definitely making sure our communication is up to date and most valid.
So that number is for all eight counties regionally. It's very difficult to know in the heat of the moment where someone lives or who's responsible. So the one number, you just call, and they're able to route that. And Poison Control at Cincinnati Children's has been doing this for a long time. So it's a right and good place to do that from.
Absolutely.
And they were very, very helpful in doing that.
So our plans, as I mentioned, for pandemic, they are up to date. They are being updated, though, as information changes and the best information available to us through the Centers of Disease Control and the Ohio Department of Health. As they give us information, we do adjust our plans. We have, at our office, set up a call bank so that if we start to see a flood of phone calls, we will be able to have our staff kind of manage those. We've worked with EMA and Nick Crossley to ensure that if we even get further inundated with calls, we can utilize those resources. And we've created just-in-time training so that we could sit down with somebody and within 15 minutes, they could start helping doing some of the response if needed. In addition, just today, the state of Ohio announced that they are opening up a statewide call center. They think that will be open on Friday. So another resource to us locally if needed and if we start to see a significant increase in phone call volume. I think it's important to mention that we are constantly in communication with the prosecutor's office. We are routinely, just through our day-to-day work. And the prosecutor's office is an important resource if we do start to see a lot of quarantining and issues where we're ending up in probate court to make sure that those quarantines are being held. As mentioned, though, this is not something new. The prosecutor's office has assisted us with tuberculosis cases when they don't stay at home. They are infectious as well, highly infectious. And so we work with the prosecutor and the probate court to self-isolate them, although maybe not self-isolate if they don't follow the direction, and actually put them into the justice center if needed. So they're prepared and they are able to assist as well. We have done joint press releases with other counties as well, and we have been making sure we get information out to school districts, elected officials, and some of the administrators to help with what's needed. And I just want to reiterate before I kind of pass the slides over to Dr. Fagins, we are trying to be as flexible as possible as the situation is evolving. We will continue to change plans and continue to make sure that Hamilton County Public Health presents itself as a leader in the region, and to make sure that we're able to address any concerns that commissioners may have, and our entire community for that matter.
So just some background information, just infectious disease in general. And I showed this with the Cincinnati Health Department in our Board of Health, just to kind of level set about the most common infectious disease of our world. And so, I don't know if you guys know, but hepatitis B is the most common infectious disease in the world. 25% of the world's population has hepatitis B. And so, you know, 2 billion. Malaria is the most common killer in the world of a specific type, pneumonia being the most type of killer, but malaria. Hepatitis C, which you've heard about, is now a part of infection, injection drug use and other things. Dengue fever, which is not an issue here, but is an issue in much of the world. In fact, I sometimes joke when I was in the Air Force, the most dangerous thing I did was to be around mosquitoes. The most deadly animal in the world is the mosquito. And so two of those deadly disease, dengue is not deadly, is malaria and dengue are both mosquito. And then tuberculosis. And we here sometimes take tuberculosis control for granted. We don't have that many cases in Ohio. We have some number of active cases, 25 or so at any time in this county, but tuberculosis continues to be a significant health issue around the rest of the world. And so just to kind of remind folks of those. The coronavirus is as old as there is a virus. Coronavirus causes the common cold. It's one of the reasons why we can't vaccinate or treat the common cold. It's a simple upper respiratory virus. And so about half, 50%, of upper respiratory viral infections is rhinovirus. About 10% to 15% would be a coronavirus. Interestingly, when you see outbreaks of a cold, that's typically the coronavirus one. When you're in a place where it's been bad cold, and that would be more likely to be the coronavirus. And we actually tested for coronavirus for a long time. There are four different strains, two alpha and two beta, the two alpha that typically cause the common cold. You see that to the left. What you see is the most dangerous thing we can do is shake hands and then touch our face, okay? And so when we talk about social distancing, we talk about typical hand hygiene, which is washing your hands for 20 or more seconds with soap and water. That helps with flu, upper respiratory infections. That helps with everything. And so not just this particular thing, but several viruses, which tend to be more common in the colder weather, that's why they're called colds, okay? And so you see it this time of year more frequently. The little spike sticking out of this specific virus, we're talking coronavirus, is where it gets its name. Looks like the corona, like the sun. To the right is you see two, and now three, novel, initially novel and then named coronaviruses. And so coronavirus starts out in animals, typically bats. And so the three beta coronaviruses, which have their origin in bats and then somehow spread from animals to humans, that happened in SARS in 2002, 2003, from bats and civet cats, that happened in MERS, Middle Eastern Respiratory Syndrome, in 2013, specific camels and still isolated to the Arabian Peninsula. And both SARS and MERS, we don't see very much. We do see a little bit of MERS, but not in this part of the country. And what we're dealing with now is a novel coronavirus, which is more like SARS than MERS. In fact, that's the name of the virus, SARS, Severe Acute Respiratory Syndrome, COVID, Coronavirus II. It's about 85, 90% molecularly genetically similar to SARS. Thankfully, it's not as deadly. In fact, it's probably going to, as we get more numbers in the denominator, we're going to see that mortality rate go down to something. The most recent number is 1.6%. But it's probably more easily spread than SARS. To give you an idea of just how easily this is spread, so this is old. This is old, and this thing is like three weeks ago. And so it's just a good example. If you see SARS to the right, and you see the typical beginnings of an outbreak, where you see kind of gradually, gradually, and then leveling off. To the left, you see, and at that time, the Wuhan coronavirus, where you see logarithmic. And that is something related to the R factor, meaning the reproducible factor. So how many people does one person infect, okay? And you guys have probably seen some various statistics or some kind of visuals on that. The flu and SARS-CoV-2, or COVID, are very similar in about 2.5. So one individual infects about 2.5, which means that it can spread. If that individual happens to be in a very highly concentrated area, like Wuhan City, Hubei Province, then that's going to be a logarithmic spread. It's going to go up very quickly. And so in addition to just how transmissible that is, so that gives you an idea of how very quickly this particular coronavirus spread, at least in the Wuhan City area. This is an example of two things, and this is, once again, dated information, too. It's kind of nice to just kind of put it in context. And so on the x-axis is the R factor. In other words, how many people does one person infect? And so you see the pink area as being kind of our best estimates for SARS-CoV-2, somewhere between, you know, one and maybe four. It's probably going to end up being very similar to the common cold in about a 2.0 or something. Today, people are quoting like a 2.6. What we don't know is the y-axis very well, and that's mortality, how many people die from this. And the reason is, is that we're looking at a percent. And so that percent is calculated from a numerator, which invariably is people who are very sick in the hospital, and a denominator that is a representative but not totally known of all the people who may have coronavirus. And so as we fully get a more idea of just how many people may have this in the world and in China, we're starting to see that that number coming down. What you see on that is somewhere between 0.1, which is influenza, 0.1 of individuals, 0.1% of individuals with influenza can die, up to 5%. That has kind of come down as we've had more and more and more numbers, especially from China. Most recently, a few days ago, 1.6. The most contagious virus is measles. One person can infect 15 people with measles. And so the most deadly virus is MERS, well Ebola, MERS and Ebola together. And so the screening, very quickly, all of our local healthcare systems use electronic medical records, and they use a very similar one. And so electronic medical record was able to adjust the triage. So if you go and you see a healthcare provider, if anybody has been to a doctor or any healthcare provider lately, I'm sure you got the question, "Have you been to China?" Or "Have you been to a place?" It's a travel history. Travel histories have always been with us, and there are various issues related to travel anywhere. And so the travel history related to China, and because we have the electronic medical record, we can adjust as we need to. So we now have Iran in there, and other places and parts of places have you been that can trigger further evaluation and testing based on wherever you hit the healthcare system. And that also gives us data, in a public health perspective, on how many people have been where, and who's positive for this. And so this one way to leverage the electronic record that we have, both Commissioner Kestner and myself were around in 2009, I in a different county during H1N1. In fact, during our pandemic exercise, we really drew from a lot of those experiences and vaccines and how we would do things. And so we have a surprising amount of experience with a novel. And H1N1 was a novel influenza. That's how it became a pandemic at that time. And so similar types of things that weren't available then are available now. And this is the kind of personal protective equipment. This is a typical cart outside a typical negative airflow room, where you see the gloves, three different sizes on the top. You see the drawers for the required parts, the goggles, the N95 mask, the gown and gloves. There is even a little picture, when you pull open, of exactly how you put them on and how you take them off. And then very importantly, you see that piece of paper there. That is a list of everyone who goes in that room, and a checkoff on what personal protective equipment did you use, okay? Here's another example of some training. These are two of our disease investigators who are putting on what's called a powered air, excuse me, yeah, powered air purified respirator. And so they have beards, which means that they wouldn't be able to wear the N95 mask. And so they have to actually use their own little negative airflow room inside their face, as it were, which is the papper, as it were. And you see them putting on, and this is part of training for our own staff, see them putting on the gloves last as they begin to enter that room, and then they will take the gloves off at last as they exit. And so some things that we have been doing for a long time continue to work here. And so I do want to point out that we test for coronavirus every day. The four, do you see it right, four community coronaviruses are on our respiratory panel that every healthcare system uses. And so it's part of us knowing, did you have the cold or not? And so you will hear, there have been many local people who have positive coronavirus. It's not the novel or the COVID, it's that coronavirus. And so it's part of our respiratory panel. It is, in fact, one of the reasons why, as we talk with our state about potential persons under investigation, that we must do these tests, rule out influenza, rule out other things, to get to the potential for the novel coronavirus. And so, yeah, there are four common types of human coronaviruses. This is just the typical, it's called biofire. All of our systems use that. And you do see Middle Eastern Respiratory Syndrome on that. And so when we do my Cosby samples, we still test for that. Thankfully, don't find it. But we are always vigilant about any type of thing that you can see. And finally, the testing itself. And you've heard a couple of hiccups. This is, happens to be, it's called reverse transcribe PCR. It is the standard test for a virus. And so the difficult part of that is to have the molecular sequence, which the World Health Organization, the CDC, had to develop, and then to develop the test for that. And what's very important is the reagent. And that's a picture of the reagent. So you see, very quickly developed this test, the only place that could do the test, and very rapidly kind of expanded. And when they sent out the reagents to the state labs, Department of Defense labs, during quality control testing, some, some of the reagents did not react appropriately. So very typical of public health, we had to pull them all back. And so as recently as this morning, we heard that our state should have the new reagent within a few days, and that we will move from sending samples through the state lab to the CDC, directly to the state lab, just like we do for Zika or for any other type of virus that we would not measure here locally. Because of the likelihood that this will be around for a while, many commercial labs are also developing their reagents, and so it's likely that commercial labs will also have the test. The validated test continues to be that it is related to the CDC's reagent, and that's the one that we use to rule out. And at the end, I really want to point out, a test is only good as a sample. And so the samples are a nasal swab. Imagine getting that all the way down, nasal, oral, pharyngeal, or nasal, pharyngeal, or an oral, pharyngeal swab. And if we don't get a good sample, we don't have a good test. And that's also part of what we in public health advise folks as they're looking at this. It's one, to make a decision about the test, but you also need to make sure that you have a good sample for the test. And then finally, we are probably in one of the largest flu seasons that we've had in many years. And you may see this data, this is a Hamilton County. We mirror the state in the number of flu cases. And so the graph we have up here is hospitalizations. Influenza confirmed, hospitalizations. I think that's the best data to get an idea. That black line there is the five-year average. So that's the average. You see it kind of peaks around the 52, the end of the year, going into the first of the year, and kind of stays pretty solid. The red line is this year, okay? And so you see a two to three times the number of influenza-associated hospitalizations this time of year. And our hospitals are dealing with that, and that's really something that we also deal with frequently. The same hand washing and infection control practices also work with flu, including droplet isolation. And so just to kind of remind ourselves that that's something that is right in front of us. Interestingly enough, initially during this particular seasonal flu, we saw influenza B, if you've heard that, which is a little bit rare. We're now seeing H1N1, pandemic influenza, which is one reason why we're seeing more pediatric issues and more some pediatric deaths. Looking at the same pandemic strain that we saw 10 years ago is in some variation circulating right now. And so we're vigilant for everything, including the potential for coronavirus disease, which is COVID, and all other infectious diseases. So we really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you.
Absolutely. What questions?
Yeah, thank you. So informative. Thank you, thank you. I just have a couple of questions, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. In fact, I'll just ask one. So you mentioned it. I'm curious to know if you do know, how long do we think that we will have to deal with this issue? You probably don't know, but if you do have any estimates, because we see, you know, the exposures and the cases in the United States increasing very gradually, what is your best guess as to how this is going to play out?
So, you know, the one thing I will say from public health and the flu is, as things get warmer and people start to do some outdoor activity and spread out a little bit more, we tend to see some of the flu incidences go down. That is one possible theory with this, although we do not know for sure.
We really don't. You know, if you look at SARS and MERS as example, we're using SARS as our best example. You saw SARS kind of peak out at six months and start to go away to the year, but it's a novel coronavirus, and we don't know. And what we will need to do is to reduce that R factor, reduce the spread through many things, including vaccination, possible treatment. And so all of those things are being studied, and it's hard to say. Every day, we do what we do, and we always wonder, like, a year from now, what will we be saying?
Right, right.
There are several vaccinations you hear of being developed right now. If one is developed, public health has a system with our local communities where we actually go to the community and they set up a point of dispensing. We did so with H1N1, where we actually went to the communities and distributed that medicine as quickly as it was available. So if we get to the point where we have a solution, we are ready to implement that plan.
Great, thank you. Comments or questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for your presentation. I was looking at the last page, confirmed influenza for 2019 to 2020. How does it compare to last, 2018 to 2019?
This year is by far more significant, yeah.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Last year, we had a little prolonged. It was not as high, but it lasted longer, which is, but the five-year average, we are in the larger flu season.
It's a higher rate this time, yeah. Which, of course, as you had indicated, that the symptoms are similar, of course, to the flu. One other question, you mentioned several numbers that people could call. There's a new statewide call center and then our local numbers. Can you articulate what those numbers are?
Certainly. So the number that I mentioned for physicians is not published here. It's specific to the physician community. Anyone is always welcome to contact their local public health department. Hamilton County Public Health can be reached at 946-7800. Our website has a ton of information and it also links to the most current information for the Ohio Department of Health as well as Centers for Disease Control.
Okay.
So I would encourage that as a resource as well.
What about the statewide call center?
They have not provided that number, but that will be a number for the general public, my understanding is.
Okay.
So once that number is available, we'll disseminate that to the commissioners and to the public.
Thank you.
And the website for public health is?
hcp.org.
Say that more slowly, please.
Hamilton County Public Health.
Very good, okay. All right, very good, thank you.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Parks?
Thank you for your presentation. It's very informative. Happy to know that there's no persons under investigation, but there have been seven tested. So do we have the test here in Hamilton County?
So the way that works is when somebody presents to the, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, when somebody presents to their physician and their physician indicates that they appear to be somebody that would fit the categories that we showed on the screen, they immediately contact their public health department. And we set up a conference call with the State Department of Health and start assessing whether or not the criterion are all met. At that point in time, the local healthcare systems do have the test kits available to take the samples necessary. And then the local health department would transport that sample to the Ohio Department of Health, who actually will send it via airplane to the Centers for Disease Control. So yes, we do have that capacity here.
Okay, okay. And the way that you test is to swab the nose?
So the test is a nasal, pharyngeal swab, an oral, pharyngeal swab, and we also draw serum. And the purpose of the serum is to determine if there's antibodies. And so part of this is epidemiology.
So where do you get the serum?
Blood test, blood test.
A blood test.
So we take a blood sample.
So swab the nose and take a blood test?
Swab the nose, swab the oral pharynx, a sputum sample if someone's able to cough that up, that's very helpful, and then blood test. And not all of that will be tested, but all of that will be kept because we'll learn something new that will make us want to go back and do certain antibody tests and things like that. And that will help us.
So why don't you test it? You said not all of that will be tested.
Right, so blood test, we don't have a blood test yet. We don't know what antibodies we're looking for.
Okay.
And so once the CDC, right, once the CDC develops a much better idea of antibodies and things, it will help us to determine not if someone had the virus or has the virus, had the virus. And so all of that will become a place where the CDC can figure this stuff out.
So as more information is available, there is better testing in the future.
Pretty standard, totally standard as any outbreak, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Could just briefly, one question, one just quick comment. So Commissioner and Doctor, I think over the past 10 years or so, we've had a couple of different incidents that have required some sort of emergency preparedness. We've had, as you mentioned, H1N1, we've had flooding, we've had the windstorm, things of that nature. And I think the one area where we have continually maybe fell a little bit short, and this is not public health, this is the community in general, is just on the communication side of things. And especially just from the perspective of understanding who has, who should be that point person, you know, to the degree we get to the point, and I hope we don't, where we have more widespread spread of this in Hamilton County or in southwestern Ohio, there's going to be the natural question, who's the point, who are people looking to? Who's communicating this? So we have an eight-county region in southwestern Ohio, correct? I would imagine that we would establish some kind of joint information center as you typically would do. Do you have any advice at this point for county administration and the board as to, because by the time it starts, it's almost too late to prepare for something like that. So do you have any advice right now that we could continue to communicate on as it relates to how communication should occur? Has your eight-county region already had some conversation about which county will play the point in that and who we should look to as the point person for communication to the degree this takes off a little bit more?
So that joint information center that you reference is part of the executive steering committee, which is made up of the local health departments in that eight-county region. And we also keep Indiana and Kentucky informed. Traditionally, it would, the individual that would take on the responsibility of being the number one person for communication would be where the incident was happening. So in the case of this particular COVID-19, it would be if a county in that eight-county region had a positive for COVID-19, they would typically be the spokesperson with input from the entire eight-county region because we want to ensure that all eight health departments, and for that matter statewide, our messaging is the same. So we have had those preliminary conversations, but to decide at this point, it's not quite appropriate.
Okay, so in general, at this point, we could say that the most likely, the health commissioner in the individual county where the incident was occurring would likely be looked to as the primary point of contact and for information on that?
That is correct.
Okay.
And in preparation, we have started preparing letters for self-isolation and preparing all the various documents. And because this is such a flexible and fluid situation, some of those letters that we wrote two weeks ago are absolutely incorrect and no longer relevant. And so we're slowly updating them and just keeping things ready so that if we need to do something, we're able to do it quickly.
And that's helpful enough as it is, just, you know, I remember back even in the windstorm, you know, it was a question of who is the right public spokesperson? Is it a commissioner? Is it the mayor? Is it a representative from fire, police, the sheriff's office? And just that right there. And granted, this is a little bit different because it is public, it's much more public health oriented, but I think it's just helpful to know that in advance before we get into a situation where we're going to have to look to a person for point communication. The other thing I would just say, and this is just a thank you to public health, is as we're talking about this on a community-wide scale, also just from a county operations perspective, and we have a lot of critical operations in the county that have to continue functioning no matter what's going on out there, whether there's a pandemic that's spreading within the community or what have you. So we are working internally on identifying those operations, working with those operations to make sure that we're conducting those operations in the safest way possible, to make sure that we understand our HR policies in terms of how we work with our employees, to make sure that if, and this is regardless of the type of infectious disease, but it takes on more significance when something like this happens, to make sure that we are looking at all of our HR policies for remote, you know, working remotely or from home, making sure that sick leave policies are consistent with the ability for people to take off time and stay with people they need to take care of, looking at our facility, cleaning and disinfecting policies, all of those things. And public health has been incredibly supportive and helpful in all of those conversations. I just wanted to thank the Doctor and Commissioner for their help with all that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. I know you are coordinating also with EMA, Emergency Management. So at some point, maybe we'll get Nick in to talk just a little bit about that coordination, but I know that you guys are on the lead. So I just want to repeat the most important information, which is that like most things, you, in order to prevent, you're washing your hands, you're coughing in your elbow and avoiding people that obviously have symptoms of the disease. I traveled last night, there were people with masks on at the airport. It's a little, you know, when you see that, it kind of takes you back a minute, it's like, whoa, wait a minute, you know? But if people are traveling, is there advice coming out of the health department that talks about folks that are traveling, like you said, to and from certain places that, you know, if they want to take every precaution, what do they do?
So just real high level, if you're going to travel abroad, I strongly recommend you keep up to date with the CDC's website and you follow their travel advisories. So right now, they have the list of countries. That is subject to change as the situation changes. So check with their website. There's three, of the countries listed there, the only country, Japan, is a level two advisory. The other four countries are a level three, the highest level advisory. So if you want to be most cautious, certainly I would not recommend going to a country listed on the CDC's website as a level three. And quite frankly, a level two means it's spreading in the community and they're indicating you should take extra precautions, but there is increased risk in those scenarios. When you're traveling, you know, it's really important, you're sleepy, you've been on an airplane, you're more prone to touching your face and your nose and your mouth, potentially shaking hands with business associates. It's that time that you really need to practice that own personal hygiene and wash your hands after you shake a bunch of hands and be aware and don't rub your face after that interaction. If you're touching the armrests in public places or hand railings or escalators, take a stop before you get to your meeting and wash your hands and then head back in to do your business. It's that general knowledge that can help prevent the flu, it can help prevent COVID-19 or any of these diseases that we're talking about.
If you need to take something, I would suggest a bottle of hand sanitizer, way more valuable than a mask.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there anything else we need to know?
No, we thank you for having us here and getting our message out. And we look forward to the continued partnership with the commissioners and the administration.
Thank you. And I think we will just have you in on a periodic basis as needed. I hope that the community will weigh in and ask questions that maybe we have not asked. And, you know, if we have you in here in a couple of weeks' time to get an update, then maybe we will be armed with some of the things or have them reach out to you directly through your website. There's one, I don't mean to delay the conversation, but there's one other conversation that's happening, I think, in the community, which is for individuals who, your parents with little kids at home that would otherwise be at school. And if there were to be an occasion where we find that, you know, these community gathering places are to be closed or schools to be closed, are you recommending or would you recommend that folks have adequate amounts of food and other things in their homes if we get further down the road where we do see some of these cases in the community?
So our website for decades has preached emergency preparedness. So the community should always be prepared for an emergency, whether it's, we're heading into spring and we have tornado season, we want you to be prepared with foods that you can prepare if there was a shortage of water, if there was a shortage of food, gas stations quit working. We want you to start planning today for that event. And that holds true even more with COVID-19. We want you to be prepared. So if there's things that you need to do to make yourself more comfortable, that's okay. But definitely be prepared with how you're going to make meals and what you're going to do in those scenarios or what backup plans, who's going to help watch your kids. Those are things that you can start having family dialogues about today so that if in a month from now or a couple of weeks from now or five years from now, we get into this scenario where you need to implement your family plan, you're ready for it.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much for being in. Appreciate it.
Great questions.
All right, our next item is Fire EMS Mobile Data Computer Platform. Andy Knapp is here with Chief Scott Souders. Please come forward and welcome this afternoon.
Yeah, that's fine. Good afternoon, Commissioners, good afternoon. I'd like to introduce Fire Chief from Green Township, Scott Souders. He's joined me today to kind of elaborate a little bit on the recent capital improvement upgrade that we've accomplished at the Communication Center. And it's always a great thing to come here and to tell you guys about the wonderful things that are going on, the 80-plus men and women that work at the Communication Center who are 24/7, you know, 365 days a year, regardless of the holiday or the day of the week, they're on duty, ready to answer calls. And we're quite proud of the work that they do. This entails a Fire EMS mobile platform that we came before this board probably about a year or so ago to secure the funding necessary to accomplish this particular upgrade. And so I'm happy to report to you that the upgrade is complete, the system is up and running. And I'll give you a little more detail about exactly what that means when I say we're up and running. The prior system was actually purchased and secured back in the early 2000s. 2004 was when the original CAD system was built. In 2005, if you recall the days post 9/11 where U.S.C. federal grant funding was quite proliferous, we were fortunate enough to receive a grant in part that allowed for the purchase of the system from lock, stock and barrel. What I mean by that is the equipment needed on the backend, the infrastructure that we needed at the Communication Center with regards to the computer aided dispatch system, along with the MDCs and all the devices that were needed to communicate that data, was secured through grant funding. That means there was no cost to the jurisdictions we serve at that time. Then the new computer dispatch system that we purchased in 2014, which also used some grant funding, we did not have sufficient funds to do the upgrade of the mobile platform at the same time as we were doing the computer aided dispatch upgrade. So it was decided at that point in time to go ahead and pursue the upgrade with the main infrastructure and do a phased-in approach. And fortunately, we're at that next phase, if you will, to bring that out to the responding units for Fire EMS. We have approximately 300 subscribers at any point in time during the day that are on our legacy system. And it's important to note that there is a completely separate law enforcement communications platform versus the Fire EMS. The law enforcement mobile platform is continuously funded by the clear tax levy. So the Fire EMS folks are a completely separate system, they're two independent systems. The legacy system, to be quite honest with you, and not to go too deep into the weeds on it, but it did not support the transport of large data files. And what that inhibited us from doing would be to have the firefighters have direct immediate access to pre-plans, for example, to elaborate mapping systems, turn-by-turn directions were not available. And even some of the more advanced features of our computer aided dispatch system, which are the use of AVL or Automatic Vehicle Location, which allows us to give us a closest unit dispatch. So for example, in Green Township, a very large township, and they have actually a hospital right in their own jurisdiction. It's entirely possible, as we get down the line into this new system, that Chief Souders may elect to send the closest ambulance to a run instead of where the closest firehouse may be. So those are things that are coming with the new system. But then also, the old system had very limited messaging capability between individual units as well as the dispatch center. Where that becomes important is there are times that you want to have some type of communication back and forth with the other field units and even with the dispatchers that you wouldn't necessarily want broadcasted on a radio system. And so the absence of that proves to be sometimes problematic. The current upgrade, the platform upgrade, as we talk about, basically allowed the Communication Center to install the necessary hardware and software that we could facilitate this service out to the subscribers. The cost of that hardware and software was right around $476,000 that we came, and there were various components of it, not to get too deep into the weeds on it, but there are, as you can imagine, it's a quite complicated system from, you know, the phone network that receives the 911 traffic all the way to the end user that the Fire EMS folks have to use. It's an extensive system that we have that requires some very high-end technology to keep us with that high uptime, you know, high uptime runtime that we expect. The annual expenses for the system and just that mobile platform is estimated to be about $45,000. And those are items such as license renewals, the software maintenance we have to have and what are called VPN tokens. In order to get into our computer system, we have a two-factor authentication for Fire EMS. They actually have to have a small keychain token, we call it, that has a continuous mathematical number that corresponds the unit that they're installed to with the person that's logging on to make sure that there's no concerns about cybersecurity issues with relating to the mobile platform. We have two platforms that we actually purchased. One of the things that's a little bit of a challenge for us is that there are so many different types of users out there that we chose to purchase two separate types of platform. This is kind of the non-glamorous part of it, but the reality is that there are some Windows-based PCs that some departments decide to use. And then there are some iOS and some Android-based things all the way to your phone system. So the Windows base is called Inform Mobile and the iOS and Android-based subscriber type of unit is called Field Ops. And I gave some screenshots and I know they really don't do justice to the type of work that these things are doing. And it's included in your packet, but I also encourage you, you know, you're welcome to visit the Communication Center at any time. I'd be happy to demonstrate and show off the technology that we have available to us. We're stopping one of the participating firehouses and I'm sure they'd be happy to show you exactly what we're using. But if you can imagine, these are screenshots actually taken from my phone. So in this day and age, the type of technology that this generation is used to is having that generation right there on their hip and having immediate access to the data that they need. And this particular Field Ops platform does just that. It allows them to have a very light version of the CAD system that will give them the status of incidents that are currently active. So these are literally screenshots from earlier this morning, showing you available incidents, showing you if I were a responder on one of these types of incidents, I could click on that incident and get more information about the patient, for example. And in the far right side, even though there are alerts that are included in this. So an alert might be that there's a Knox box. A Knox box is a key box that firefighters use so that they don't have to break down, you know, very expensive doors. And all the way to, if there's some type of information that we need about a resident that's on file in our system, they get the alert right then and there on this app that's on their phone. In addition to that, it gives them the mapping, very much like what you're familiar with when operating in your vehicle. It's a click on the incident, it gives you the turn-by-turn directions, it'll show you the user, the active incidents that are currently going on in the area. So very much like what you would use for your own personal GPS, very similar to Fire EMS. And obviously, we want those guys to be able to get to the cause as quickly as possible. So this is So this is huge for us. It's like transitioning into the talking about the Windows-based PCs, which is the more traditional type of mobile data computer that you see in the apparatus. I provide this photo up there, and these are all pieces of apparatus from throughout Hamilton County and pieces of apparatus that we dispatch for, and this is where I warned Chief Souders, I was going to kid the firemen just a little bit, in that we can't get them to agree upon the color of the fire truck. And so the very basics of things, there's a rainbow of colors throughout there that represent our Fire EMS professionals. So this is legitimately, these are all of our users just on our system. And as a result of that, that provides just a little bit of difficulty for us in that there are so many options that they have for installing this equipment in their vehicles, also keeping in mind that I don't have a technical staff that I can deploy in the field. So we're relying very heavily on the Fire EMS professionals to kind of assist us a little bit. It's truly a partnership in that there are some chiefs, like Chief Souders, who have an IT professional, that they're willing to loan to us to help us with not just getting their own systems up and running, but then to also help others as we proceed down the list. But there are 38 different fire departments, there are 65 different firehouses, hundreds of different, and that's legitimately hundreds of different apparatus configurations. So we are providing the infrastructure, and it's very similar to what we do with the radio system. We provide the infrastructure, the users then are supplying the devices that access that infrastructure. So the type of PC that they use, whether it's a hardened type of laptop that has military specification that you could throw it and drop it and not have to worry about any damage, all the way to a Microsoft Surface type of device that you may be most familiar with even using yourselves. The type of mounts for the vehicles, everyone has a different philosophy of how they want that mounted in the vehicle, how they want it secured, the type of cellular router that they need, including the antenna system. So some of the departments are using a Surface-based product that has an internal air card type of system, and others are using, most are using what is called a vehicular mounted modem, which gives them a hardened installation guaranteeing the data throughput that they need. We also have, can support a variety of cellular services, and that would be your Verizon, your AT&amp;T, your Sprint, T-Mobile, those types of things. We are recommending what is called FirstNet, which is a federal initiative for public safety broadband wireless. I could spend probably a whole meeting just talking about that, but nonetheless, FirstNet is a nationwide cellular system that's dedicated to just first responders, that's actually overseen by the federal government. The departments that are currently, that have, so this is kind of a photograph showing you the more hardened type of install, and I know it can be kind of a challenge to see. This was not a type of project where we unplug the old and turn on the new. This is a project that is going to creep across the county as the departments have the funding available to them to install the new technological devices that are necessary because it's going to be, they need the computer system, they need the mobile router, they need the installation mounts. As they can afford that, and the good news of that is this year, we provided them with a reduction in the user fee, that we hope that they're taking that reduction in the user fee, rolling that into capital improvement projects such as this to help facilitate a much better service to their residents. So right now, these are the departments that are definitely online, that are working with us, that have the ability to, and I hesitate to say beta test because it's out there and it's running, but it is a very challenging type of installation in that there's no technical staff that are field staff from the Communication Center, we're relying on the fire departments themselves to provide that type of expertise to us. And with that, I would say, you know, thank you for continued support. And I'd like for Chief Souders to kind of give his insight into how this has changed what they do within Green Township.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you all for the reduction. That's a big deal for us, as well as everybody else in Hamilton County that's utilizing the services. Other than being the chief of Green Township, I also represent the Communications Committee for Hamilton County Fire Chiefs, so I'm kind of here on their behalf as well. But one of the things, let's just be clear, white fire trucks are the only way to go, so.
Let's get that photo back.
Yeah, let's get that back. One of the things that, we're just now transitioning to this new platform, and just to give you the simplistic version of this, everybody remembers dial-up on when we first got internet, okay? And in all honesty, the technology of what we're leaving is about the same comparison, it's the same speed of what dial-up was back when we first started the internet. So we're going from that to a modern-day version of communications and getting that information, being able to transmit a lot more information than we could ever do before. This is, the direction this is going from here is to be able to, there's going to be a time where video is going to be coming through our computer system, we're going to have pictures coming through, we're going to be able to see live views of the scenes that we're going to before we ever get there. So that's all based on this type of technology. So the future is, you know, still, there's still a lot of things that have to go down the road, but it's important that, another thing to consider or understand in Hamilton County especially and outside of the city of Cincinnati is we are 38 different fire agencies. And a lot of people will say, well, Cincinnati does it this way, why aren't we doing it that way? They are one fire agency with multiple locations, but their communication system is consistent across the board because everybody, they don't have 38 different people deciding how things should be done. And that's unfortunate, and we're striving to unify that a little bit, but that is a complication that by the nature of our design, that's always going to be a challenge. So other than that, we, you know, I've talked to some of the other departments that are benefiting from the reduction. I mean, that certainly is something that the intent here is to turn it around and say, hey, we do need to invest in these things, we have to have this to operate efficiently. And I know the old legacy system in time, for a lot of different reasons, is going to be obsolete. So the departments that don't, right now, have the funding to do this are banking on this, you know, this year and next year as far as reductions, that's going to help them to make those investments down the road. Needless to say, everybody's budgets are different, and that's why there's only maybe eight or 10 departments on or out of 38 that have started this process. So it is a great thing, we're very happy that it's finally coming through, and I know, Jeff, I know we've talked about this several years back, just the, you know, the idea of what we wanted to have going down the road, and with a lot of help from a lot of different people, we've finally come through and we're very happy and looking forward to the process ahead. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So I just have one question. So you referenced that the communities that are participating and there are some that are not. Is it a matter of finances or is it a matter of timing or, it's not lack of exposure, I guess? Everybody knows what's available.
You know, the information we bring out in monthly meetings, we bring out in different correspondents, I mean, as far as the Communications Committee and the Communication Center, there's information that's certainly brought out to every fire chief in Hamilton County. Some, you know, I can't speak for every one of them to tell you why it is, but I can tell you, there is a portion of things that we do and have done over the years that some communities just cannot afford to jump in all the way, you know, right off the bat. If we have a department that, you know, the smaller departments, obviously a lower budget, they don't have as big of demands on their services, but at the same time, the technology, the cost of technology doesn't change no matter who's purchasing it, and sometimes for some departments, that is a struggle. So I would say there's a combination of reasons, but I think funding is probably the number one reason as far as why everybody's not jumping in right away.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for this report, very informative. And Madam President, I was going to ask the same question as it relates to cost. You were saying, Andy, about the type of cellular service you would recommend FirstNet, and I was just wondering, for those who are already involved, did they choose FirstNet for their cellular service?
We, as far as the FirstNet goes, it's very slow to be adopted. Again, it's, FirstNet is the first responders' network authority, is a federally overseen initiative, it's actually the AT&amp;T network. There is a challenge in the area, to be quite honest with you, with the proliferation of AT&amp;T throughout the area. I would say, and I don't know their exact coverage, they have very good coverage in most areas, there are still some areas, and I know Green Township suffers with this, where it's, the coverage is just not there. And it's unfortunate that the, really, the geography, if you will, of our community kind of inhibits some of that proliferation of the cellular, it's the hills and the valleys are, you know, quite honestly, are the areas that are a challenge. So the reason we recommend FirstNet is that FirstNet is, has what is called priority and preemption, so that in mass disasters and situations where you lose a lot of infrastructure, FirstNet is guaranteeing these first responders on this that they will get immediate, you know, as soon as access and priority access over the citizenry, so that they are called as in their work can continue. And that's one thing that it's slowly, you know, kicking in, I think Chief Souders, if I'm not mistaken, you use one device to try to test it, which is a new device coming online, but he does have a challenge in his own firehouse, if there's no building penetration in that firehouse on Harrison Avenue. So it's getting there, but it's very slow to be adopted, to be quite honest.
Okay, thank you for that. But they still have an option of what cellular?
Yes, yes.
So I'm just wondering, how does that, we're trying to get more clarity in the communication, and so if I get Verizon and somebody else gets FirstNet, and how would that?
So the good news is that really, we are carrier agnostic when it relates to the access of the software. So the software resides on a computer inside of the fire truck or the paramedic unit, and it uses an internet connection, and then we have a VPN system that basically creates a secure tunnel right into our dispatch network. So we're carrier agnostic, it's not a big challenge for us right now. You can, our users can pretty much use whichever cellular carrier that they prefer.
Okay, so one last question as it relates to FirstNet cost. Is it cost prohibitive then, you think, the FirstNet? Is that higher cost or?
Yeah, it's. It actually offers more flexibility than what we're currently using, like Verizon, for example.
Okay.
But there again, topography changes in different parts of the county, and if you're in an area where you're just not getting the coverage, it's only as good as you've got to go with what you're going to get maximum.
Good as is, AT&amp;T has a 25-year contract with FirstNet, and they've got billions of dollars to invest in infrastructure in this area. It's not public knowledge, but each year, I'm given a briefing that shows where is AT&amp;T investing the dollars for public safety communications, and I can tell you that they've got four or five brand-new tower sites that are on the FirstNet system just going up across Hamilton County. I know they just turned up a new one in Claremont County. So there is a really good investment, and I have very good relationships already established with the FirstNet Authority as well as the AT&amp;T FirstNet representatives.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Other than to thank you for coming, Andy and Chief, I have nothing.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you so much for coming in, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that is the end of the agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the cause?
I have nothing.
All right, very good, I'll move that we adjourn?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
...